Thank you all for your participation at the five-year forecast with our school board. Agreement update.
Mr. Mayor, the council at this time, at the request of the Virginia Beach Public Schools, we would like to give a council update under 30 percent. Okay. All right, I guess we were not.
Yes. I gotta get back down here fast.
You worked.
Chatting with them.
Superbolic camera can do. Technical difficulties.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, at the request of the Virginia Beach Public Schools, school staff, specifically the facilities division, would like to give council an update on the PPEA agreement, most specific to 30 percent design.
Thank you, Mr. Duhany. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council members, and Mr. Duhany. I'm pleased to speak with you today about the 30 percent design development for the three schools in the PPEA interim agreement, the result of a great amount of public input over the last year for the replacement schools of Princess Anne High School, Williams Elementary School, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and Bayside High School. I'll turn it on. I think I'm working. Thank you. As many on the school board and city council have been participants in this process, our journey to the 30 percent design development has focused on the educational program or curriculum needs for these school replacement projects. In focusing on the educational needs of our 21st century learners, VB CPS strives to prepare every student with critical thinking skills and maximize students' potential in gaining future-ready career-related skills. Through the design-build PPEA process, this input has also helped in exploring guidelines and space-saving strategies or efficiencies while meeting the programmatic needs of the school division. So again, with school board and city council participation along the way, the public input process has been integral in working towards how efficient these new spaces could be in supporting the needed critical thinking skills of our students. The educational program was explored at a variety of levels, from students, staff, and community leaders. Design continued to 15 percent schematic or conceptual designs, which helped in understanding of needed spaces to support the curriculum while finding ways to reduce redundancies or create efficiencies through both adjacencies of spaces or sharing of spaces. As work continued with meeting guidelines and reviews by code officials during summer hiatus from larger community meetings, school leadership held a working session in August to verify efficiencies established at the 15 percent design, as well as to explore additional efficiencies that could be accommodated without negatively impacting curriculum needs. The large group session of senior leadership helped the design team to understand what could further be refined to meet our students' needs in the most efficient way possible. This work continued through 30 percent design development, where conceptual spaces became floor plans that were better informed, not only about curriculum needs, which have changed greatly since this turn of the century, but also regarding building, site codes, and safety considerations. Much attention throughout the process was given to the areas where students would gain educational experiences. Central to this are the learning communities, where core classrooms and electives were seen as needing to be intricately connected in order to prepare students to be future-ready. The ability to use these learning communities as inclusive areas where students could explore academic topics in multiple ways, enhancing collaboration and critical thinking skills, skills needed by our students in a rapidly changing world, with core coursework such as math, science, social studies, and English embedded in these learning communities, along with electives that pique students' interest and skills, such as world languages, art, music, and career and technical education, or CTE, all being a large component of these learning communities. Input focused on the ability of spaces to foster student interests and growth. So these next several slides will take a look at the spaces that make up the educational specifications, first of which is the core academic end supports, which includes the learning communities. These learning communities employ classrooms of a variety of sizes to not only support the core subject areas, but also electives, special needs, and CTE, career and education, technical education needs. Without having a variety of spaces in addition to admin and staff support areas embedded in these learning communities, room utilization would be able to be maximized throughout the day. Through the design process, the number of learning communities was also reduced, saving space on support and circulation spaces such as hallways. This inclusionary approach helps to serve all students to excel in their subjects of interest, or as some put it, reasons why students want to go and excel at school, becoming better ready to take on the complexity of the world that they will be leaders of. The next section of the educational specifications, instructional activities include electives such as arts, music, performing arts, the auditorium, and athletics, with the goals of collaboration, hands-on project learning, and flexibility of spaces that support career pathways, technical education, and academy programs. With the continued goal through the design process of maximizing flexibility and room use, spaces are designed to be flexed for several uses and right size to support the school and curriculum needs, along with class sizes. An example of this approach is shown on this slide regarding physical education spaces in the high school designs, where the original input called for a main gym to satisfy three courts, and through the design work, this was brought down to the main gym with two courts, still providing competition spaces. Adjacent to the main gym, other spaces would also be combined to maximize utilization, such as in the fitness program, also considering aerobics and dance in the same space, being able to be combined with the wrestling program, again, in a single space through scheduling. A similar approach with gymnastics and the auxiliary gym was also seen as important in maximizing spaces for the design concerning high school athletic spaces. Our next section, campus common areas, include the media center, schola, and dining commons, and those have also been designed with efficiencies in mind. These multipurpose spaces allow for collaborative group work and discussions, and centralize these flexible spaces to support all students' and educational program needs. The schola allows for smaller gathering spaces with retractable seating that can accommodate both regular and special education needs. The media center allows for a variety of collaborative spaces in addition to academic research supports. The dining commons of the high school designs utilizes the central corridors to maximize space use while creating a central gathering area for needs both during and after-school hours. In relation to the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade program, the dining commons area is also centrally located in the combined school and able to be combined to satisfy gathering spaces for the middle school and the elementary school larger gathering needs. Learning stairs in this program also help to create smaller gathering spaces for each wing of the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade programs. Central school administration spaces have also been designed to maximize areas for student, staff, and community outreach and support. Administrative spaces are focused to be welcoming and also provide safety for the school as a whole. Co-locating a number of administrative spaces near classrooms also helps to maximize support for students and staff. Support spaces such as counseling, the school clinic, and then Community Engagement Center are not single-focused areas and are designed with the intent of holistic community support and engagement. While considering building facility spaces, the design focuses on ensuring operations would help extend the life of the building and the systems that support it. Considering the Virginia Beach climate, interior spaces would be utilized to support building systems, often employing mezzanine spaces or volumes above and between spaces that may otherwise go unused. A goal for building systems is also to strive for maintenance to occur without interrupting teaching and learning. The inclusivity of design and sharing of supports has remained a central tenant for all areas of the educational specifications, as well as in the specialized programs of district-wide special education at Princess Anne High School, and the ability to share spaces and learning opportunities with regular education areas when possible, promoting life skills and showcasing student talent, such as in areas related to culinary skills. NJROTC would continue to be accommodated at one school for Princess Anne High School for both Princess Anne High School and the Bayside High School program. The fieldhouse at the high school level has undergone many reductions in size through the design process, with its central location providing adequate access and use by all athletic programs and competition sports. So in front of you now, this draft rendering with items such as building materials and construction techniques is still being evaluated for efficiencies and cost savings. This shows Princess Anne High School at 30 percent design development. This view shows the front of the building along Virginia Beach Boulevard with the learning communities four-story structure on the right side of the main entrance, with a centralized media center on the second floor and admin on the first floor, as well as a special education center spaces just to the left of the main entrance. The 30 percent design has become more refined from the 15 percent conceptual design that we last showed you in our last briefing. The 30 percent development has been refined with additional educational program efficiencies and as a result of city reviews and constructibility refinements, with the front of the building and main entrance along Virginia Beach Boulevard, an auditorium and gym in the rear of the building at Princess Anne High School, leading to outdoor athletic facilities off of the gym to the east of the building. Now, these are the floor plans of Princess Anne High School, showing admin spaces to the right of the main vestibule on the first floor, with the special education center to the left. The main central spine of the building runs north and south and includes the dining commons area, which could also be considered as a student union when dining is not taking place. Following the central hall from the special education center and learning communities leads to both the auditorium and the gym in the rear of the building. As part of the inclusivity of design, the learning communities located along the main hall in the center of the building house a variety of classrooms, including career and educational spaces in the dark blue, special needs spaces in the green, and core subjects such as science, math, English, and social studies in the light blue, with administrative spaces also co-located in the learning communities. So now we're going to take a look at the second school, Williams Elementary School, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, 30 percent design development. This rendering gives us a look at the shared courtyard of the school that is off of the central hallway that runs the length of the school, which includes shared spaces for administration on the first floor and the media center on the second floor, and when scheduling allows, arts, music, dining, and gym is also shared. On the second floor is the media center overlooking the courtyard. You can also see the unique identities of the fourth and fifth grade wing on the right side of the courtyard and the sixth grade wing on the left side of the courtyard, both of which are two stories. So again, processing or progressing from 15 percent design to 30 percent for this two-story building, additional refinement and understanding of constructibility on-site have advanced design even further, with athletic support spaces provided for the school and for the tri-campus area, to be shared and programmed with the community as a whole. Savings and efficiencies have been made as they relate to administrative and support spaces, as well as in the design of centrally located spaces that can be scheduled to be shared. So looking at the floor plan of Williams Elementary School on Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, you can see the shared central hallway running the length of the building with administrative spaces to the right of the front entrance, which is at the top of the floor plans here in front of you, followed by cafeteria, dining spaces, and gym spaces also on the right. On the left, we see shared art, music, and career and technical education spaces, and then on either side of an open courtyard, which we looked at in the rendering, are the two-story fourth and fifth grade wing, and then a two-story sixth grade wing, again inclusive of special ed needs and support spaces. So we're now at our last draft rendering, showing a view of Bayside High School, as seen from Haygood Road at the front of the building, with common spaces to the right of the main entrance, the auditorium, and then the gym, leading to outdoor athletic spaces in the rear of the building. Bayside High School core classrooms, special needs, and CTE spaces are within learning communities to the left of the main entrance. And on either side of a central courtyard, with two stories in the front and then four stories in the rear to help with massing. Progressing from 15 percent design, the 30 percent design has been further refined to understand greater constructibility of the site, with athletic spaces to the rear of the building, and a courtyard extending outdoor learning areas accessible to the wings of each learning community. Looking at the floor plans for Bayside High School, on the first floor, we have administrative spaces located on the left side of the main entrance, followed by a schola and the learning communities around a central courtyard, with the Health Sciences Academy accommodated on the first floor, again, in the dark blue area, along with art, special needs, core classrooms, and elective CTE spaces. The more common spaces, auditorium and gym, are on the right side of the main entrance, with the central hall also used as a dining commons with access to outdoor learning and gathering spaces. The inclusive learning communities continue to access to the second floor in front of the building and continue to the second, third, and fourth floors in the rear of the building, allowing natural light into the outdoor learning areas of the courtyard. As with our other schools, common spaces are able to be used for community events, both during and after-school hours, with the classroom wings of the learning communities closed off to the public when needed. So as a recap, all three schools strive to create these 21st century learning spaces to support curriculum needs and critical thinking skills. Buildings are designed to be flexible and adaptable over time to support changing needs. Opportunities for this PPA process are considered in terms of cost savings related to an earlier completion of the three schools, avoiding years of inflation, through creating efficiencies in spaces, and assessing the cost of constructibility, with the contractor and the design team working together through design, and in having a guaranteed maximum price versus a surprise low bid price at the end of the process, with greater understanding of cost and working with budget development prior to entering into a construction contract. Now, it's important to note as well that the school division will assess the ability for us to enter into the PPEA prior to going forward and introducing it as a possible option. So I also wanted to show you this during this presentation. It's a very busy slide, and those of you who are probably part of the design sessions are familiar with it. This is basically a look at the educational program itself. We've just reviewed a lot of these spaces in detail, one category at a time, and again, it summarizes the space needs for each of the categories. The Bayside High School prototype is a school shown on the left at roughly 336,000 square feet, and Princess Anne High School is shown to the right at roughly 340,000 square feet, with both of the schools having additional career technical education spaces than we would have formally had, and the special education center at Princess Anne High School accommodating district-wide needs. This next slide is another look at the educational program and space needs, but this time for Williams Elementary School and Bayside Sixth Grade Program, which is unique as it's a fourth, fifth, sixth grade program meeting both elementary school and middle school curriculum needs. The building is roughly 172,000 square feet, with identifiable wings for each of the learning communities and a variety of shared spaces in the campus core, offices, and support areas. So our design team is currently finalizing comments that they received during review in order to derive a guaranteed maximum price, or a GMP. We will continue with project finance planning, working with budget leadership at both the school board and city council level. We intend to come back to you in January for discussion of the guaranteed maximum price and the proposed square footage. After receiving this information, staff will review project information and make a recommendation on whether or not to proceed with the PPEA process. If recommending proceeding with the PPA process, the school division would look for action in the February-March timeframe. So with our next steps to continue to work with the contractor and design team, or receipt of the guaranteed maximum price and proposed square footage for these three schools, we intend to brief the school board again on January 9th, 2024, and then again come to city council right after that, and would like any questions you might have related to this brief sent to the chair of the board by December 1st, 2023. So I thank you again for your time today and for the participation of the community during this extensive design process. At this time, I'd like to take any questions on the 30 percent design that we've just reviewed.
Any questions? Amelia.
Can you go back on the, and again, thank you for this presentation, from having attended the meetings, to see where you are now. Very good.
Thank you, yes.
What was the square footage for the Bayside Sixth Grade?
So again, what we wanted to do was allow time for processing in terms of the educational program and what we see here. I was really trying to show what the 30 percent design is, but as you can see, as I noted, we have the Bayside, the Williams Elementary School Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, which already we're gaining efficiencies, will have excess property with Bayside Sixth Grade Campus getting vacated, and combining the two programs into one school building, sharing administrative and support needs. The total square footage we have at this time, and again, this is 30 percent design, so we're still going through. We just had a meeting yesterday, even this morning, on in terms of mechanical systems, plumbing, electrical needs, which is a really high, you know, high cost for these buildings, and trying to make sure they're as efficient as possible, and also looking at cost savings in the future as well. But Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus that you have in front of you, it's at 172,000 square feet. To the left, you can see the spaces that are unique to Williams Elementary School, fourth, fifth. To the right, you can see the Bayside Sixth Grade programmatic needs, and then the shared spaces are itemized there right in the middle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, Mary, and then Josh.
Thank you so much for being here. What I'd like to know is, given what the proposed building would be... But I'd like to compare that to what is there. So what is the current square footage, and also the population of what it is now, and what is expected?
Sure. So again, I'd love to get any questions regarding the square footage and the guaranteed maximum price by December 1st, and the population as well. But the population at Bayside High School, while it's not growing in leaps and bounds, that is one of our most stable populations. We have 1,900 students there. At Princess Anne High School, we were able to take the 1,800 students we were looking at for Princess Anne High School at the beginning of the design process, and we've dropped that down to about 1,700. We did increase our special needs program to 150 students from 100, because that is a growing program. Our IB Academy is very, very stable. That participation rate has been wonderful, but it's just the in-zone students at Princess Anne High School. Those numbers have been dropping just a little bit. So in terms of planning, we did drop that school from 1,800 to 1,700 students, and we've done the same at Williams Bayside Six in terms of looking at their program as well in terms of enrollment. So that's really been helpful for us for this process.
I don't understand why I can't find out what the current square footage is of these buildings. They're already in existence.
Yeah, I would just like to have that conversation after receiving all the questions after with the board. So it's roughly around 110,000 square feet at Bayside High School currently?
Bayside's 110,000? No.
I'm sorry. 210,000 square feet. I'm so sorry, ma'am. 210,000 square feet at Bayside High School. I'm sorry for speaking. That's okay. Yes.
And how about Princess Anne?
I'm sorry.
Princess Anne?
Princess Anne is roughly around that square footage as well.
110. And then the combined Williams School and Bayside Six.
I do not have those numbers on me right now. I can get it, though.
And I had everybody see what we passed earlier this year on the resolution, and one of the things is supposed to have some fine efficiencies, which you use that word a lot today, of size and scale, but also to design functional, so as be able to have scalable options.
Yes, so...
So to be having scalable options.
Yes, and that's why we wanted to wait for questions till our January 9th brief, when we're looking at, we still haven't gotten a guaranteed maximum price from the contractor. They're still doing their work, as well as in the square footage as well. So that's one of the reasons. I didn't want to have this brief be delayed. I wanted to make sure that everyone here who's been participating, and thank you for your participation as well, was able to see, and those who haven't been able to come to meetings, was able to see the progress, rather than having to wait. But they're working diligently right now on a guaranteed maximum price, and when we do get that, we will also be able to have our scalable options for you as well.
So also, let me just say, I understand that educational needs have changed.
Yes.
And the way we did things are different than when I went to Bayside High School. But it's, we still have to figure out how to pay for it, and I've got, and I understand it'd be a little bit bigger, but I mean, Bayside's over 50 percent larger, and it's the same number of students, and same thing for Princess Anne. And I think there could be some really great efficiencies with putting those two schools together with Williams and Bayside Six. For example, Landstown Middle and Landstown Elementary, they were put together with, they were able to join their cafeteria, and a lot of their core subjects could be joined, and that saved a lot of money. So that's a really good thing that can happen there. But I have to tell you, I gotta be really concerned with over 50 percent bigger. But I have to tell you, I got to be really concerned with over 50% bigger. That doesn't sound like efficiencies to me. I mean, I look forward to what's coming in January, but just to give you a heads up, I have some big concerns over hearing these numbers.
Absolutely, and again, I, we have been going forward with input from everyone in the community, from our educational leadership administration and and members of the community as well as leaders of community, and and you are right, that educational programming has changed. You know, we now have collaboration, which is the way the work environment also works today, to be competitive students in the 21st century world, and we're working on these buildings being spaces for the next 80 to 100 years so that the students who attend them can continue to be competitive as well.
And we know that our school population numbers is declining rather than going up.
Well, they.
And also, education could be changing with technology. There may be more distance learning going on, so that's why I really have to question this over 50% larger spaces. It's just, it was, it was a jolt to me when I first heard it, so just wanted you to be aware of at least how I'm personally feeling.
Okay, thank you.
Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Then Chris.
Ms. Ingram, thank you very, very much for the presentation and for the work by you and your team over the last year now with the community meetings. I thought they were, most of the ones I attended were from Princess Anne High School, but I also attended Bayside High School, and I thought they were very well attended. Participation was meaningful, and I think that, you know, as we started the process, the focus really was on the needs, the educational specifications and the needs, and that were driven by the people that are doing the work in the buildings and the administrative staff, and ultimately it resulted in what we're looking at. And I am also, like the rest of us, mindful that these are large investments, and they're also intended to last incredibly long time as well. And I just, and I know we've talked generally about square footage, but but something that I observed and experienced when I when I went to Bayside High School earlier this year to visit was in between classes, how crowded those hallways are. And you literally can't get through the hallway, and kids aren't able to get to class on time because of how crowded those hallways are, and even just increasing the hallway space in some of these schools, I would imagine, is a significant contributing factor to some of the square footage changes that we've seen, as well as the focus on career and technical, the technical education that we've heard from the community and other stakeholders is an important component of our educational process moving forward, and incorporating these elements into into all of our schools as they're rebuilt would seem to me to be more cost-effective than building a brand-new building and maintaining it for for just that purpose. I've heard community members talk about building a new career and technical education school just as a standalone, so so I just, I felt like I wanted to inject that at least into the conversation and also commend you and your staff for your work because it's been, it's been a great process.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and we really do, and I really appreciate that. We do the best we can at the school division, so you know, even at Bayside High School, we did the locker removals there, we put whiteboards up in the hallways to try to give students the opportunity for collaborative learning. Our Health Sciences Academy, we have not been able to really update those spaces to the most recent technology there for those students, so it's really an opportunity for them. And then just to give them access, some of the things we've heard, both from students, parents, and some of our community leaders, some of our higher educational leaders, is that, you know, students just need access to some of these career technical education spaces just to see what's out there in growing fields. And and once, you know, one of the other things through design, we heard a lot from students, is, you know, I would maybe take career technical education, but I really want to stay with my friends, I really want to be in my high school home. And so we really thought, hopefully, this is a great win-win in terms of increasing, and that's part of the larger square footage, is those career technical education spaces in both of the high schools as well as in the Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and providing opportunities for students to get the latest technology, which it's a very fast-changing environment and workforce. We have a great career technical education administration that is always in touch with our industries, the shipyard, other industries that we have here in Virginia Beach that need skilled workforce that is being left through attrition and retirement and wanting to fill those voids with new talent, and they don't always see the availability of those those skill sets coming into the workforce as quickly as they're leaving, so.
Chris?
Thank you. I think it's important, I know the preference is to kind of get all the questions by December 1st, but we are in a very public setting, so I'm going to throw my questions out for you, and they'll be recorded in terms of being in the public record. I had sent a document to my colleagues earlier in the year, and Vice Mayor, to answer your question, the current square footage of Princess Anne High School is 228,000 square feet approximately.
Thank you.
And the current square footage of Bayside High School is approximately 200,000, and at the time, the proposal was 342 for PA and 337 for Bayside, and I think it's important to make sure that the public can get those data points. I saw on the Bayside schematic that we had lacrosse, lacrosse field, and that was interesting because I know just this year lacrosse became a VHSL sanctioned sport. But last week, we had a presentation from HRSC, and they were requesting up to $15 million, and they had stated that a lot of the lacrosse was played there. Are the schools collaborating currently with HRSC for these tournaments or citywide tournaments, regional tournaments? Because where are we playing now?
So we currently have been installing at our high schools turf fields to be able to satisfy both football and lacrosse at the same time. The high use of the fields when we leave it just grass turf or natural turf becomes too muddy to play after so much use. So the turf fields, there is a turf field currently at Bayside High School. We're done with almost all the high schools. We have three left to go, just completed two this last summer. And so we would continue with Bayside High School having a turf field there. The two other fields you see behind you are really multipurpose fields or practice fields, but the competition would really take place on the turf field, if that makes sense.
So for the viewing public, that lacrosse field is just for practice, that's not for competition?
Those are basically multipurpose fields that have been lined out, they will remain grass, and the turf field for competition purposes would be in the center of the track there on the baseball field, on the football state field, I'm sorry, to be shared with both football and lacrosse and soccer.
Thank you, and that's important because Bayside is going to be considered the prototype.
Yes, it would. So the same, the same design could be used at First Colonial High School, Kempsville High School, and Green Run High School, and we have the ability to either grow or shorten the wings, add on to it if there is additional capacity needed. As we're doing right now, we're making sure that we are building it for the smallest amount of students as possible. We do have a very stable enrollment right now. We did have some decline from our highest point in 97, 98 over those those 10 years, but since then, you know, with with the exception of COVID, that first COVID year, coming back to school, we've been very stable, only declining roughly 100 students at a time.
One of the questions, and this, well, I'll get the manager to send it over, but just for the public, is the total amount of reversion funds that we've sent back to schools the last four fiscal years, to get an idea of what that total is. I had a chance to review the Jay Lark study as well as your HIRE report from 1114, 2023. I think the school board discussed it, and one of the main challenges, concerns that was echoed in the report was, of course, enrollment, declining enrollment, and then on page 65, the facilities were concerned about the square footage of expanding schools even if student enrollment declines, and that took into consideration distant learning. We currently have eight high school academies, one gifted program in the schools we have. Are you seeing any tension with those current programs? Like the legal studies, I've tried to visit First Colonial, there doesn't seem to be a lot of overcrowding currently, I'm trying to understand.
So it's the collaboration spaces that student really needs, students really need to work in. You know, we have at the high school level roughly 27, 28 students in their core classrooms, and it's very difficult, you know, you can just fit the furniture in our classrooms. So to be able to work in groups together, there's really nowhere additional to go. Our hallways are the minimum width, you know, back to the 1950s, 60s building design, so even that's not really an opportunity for students. And as I mentioned, as a division, we're really doing the best we can when we have funding for things such as locker removals, adding whiteboards, adding collaboration spaces, we do that as much as possible. But one of the benefits, again, of the 30% design is a variety of space sizes as well, and we've seen that really be advantageous at our elementary school prototype buildings where you don't have a speech therapist necessarily taking up a whole classroom to work one-on-one or two-on-one with a student. And at the high school level, you know, really thinking these these smaller collaborative spaces are good just for student groups to get together, but also for those special support staff to help with remediation. You know, we have a lot of COVID learning loss now. Our special needs population, you know, as many of you just saw at the five-year forecast, a lot of our special needs population economically disadvantaged while our enrollment's staying stable. Those populations are really growing, and the supports that they need to be competitive in the workforce when they graduate from our K-12 schools are 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 greater than your our regular education students and some students who might need those additional supports to be competitive.
I've really, as serving with Vice Mayor Wilson on the kind of school revitalization, I looked at the top six largest school districts or, I guess, public system, public school systems. Fairbanks, number one, 222 schools, 178,000 students. Prince William, number two, 97 schools, 90,000 students. Loudoun County came in at number three, 98 schools, 81,000 students. I think we're at number four, this 87 schools, 62,000 students. Henrico, 81 schools, 49,000 students. Chesterfield, 62,000 students. And in my research, I found that some of these schools have engaged in a PPA. They were a little bit more collaborative with their legislative arm, council, board. My question is, and this is for the December 1st, is out of these top six, will you all be able to share of those that have built schools in the last two to three years, how many of them have built larger schools than the existing ones that are currently being used?
We can certainly take that question, and again, I welcome any questions such as that to be sent to the chair of the board so that we're ready to answer any questions that you all might have, so. But yes, we, yeah, we definitely are, you know, definitely communicate with our partners throughout the Commonwealth, and you know, we are not unique in the collaborative learning environment and having these variety of spaces available for students to be able to to have collaborative learning as we see in the workforce today. So it's not a unique program to Virginia Beach City Public Schools or even to the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Okay, Amelia.
I was listening, and this crazy pickleball, we're number 10 now in the nation, and I'm listening and nothing about this sport, and it says for social skills, for motor skills, and none of these have anything to do with that being included. Have you all thought about in some way that it's an after-school program that these kids can do? Because when I was in China, they had little people playing tennis.
Yeah.
I mean, not tennis, what do you call it, table tennis, but the point was it helped them with their social. And may, even though a lot of seniors are doing this pickleball, I think it's going down the generation. What's your?
Absolutely. We have full-size tennis courts programmed at both the high schools right now. At Tri-Campus, we do not have any tennis courts, but we do have two multipurpose fields and a softball field to be programmed. But what we've done and what we will do with these new schools is able to line the tennis courts. In our last two school tennis course replacements at our existing schools, we've lined it also with the pickleball striping, and that is, yeah, and that is something also that our P E curriculum engages with in the students in our gym spaces inside in the building as well. So it's definitely, you know, one of the important parts of learning is the social aspect of it and learning how to work with others, and that teamwork through athletics, through performing arts, through working with collaboratively with, you know, your peers and understanding the way other people are thinking to help you to be problem solvers as students grow up is really important in the program, and that's, that's one of the things we're trying to reflect in these designs as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to thank you very much, and let me just, you know, close up here. You know, once again, you know, this is something that's going to be needed as we go forward, but you know, once again, I think with the five-year forecast we just had, we're going to have a confrontation with reality. In a lot of ways, not just, you know, the schools, our $500 million-plus bond referendum is now going to cost $998 million, and that's probably just the first down payment about what we're going to have to do in the future. We said 87 school buildings. Approximately, how many of those do you think are going to be fall into the category of being obsolete or in need of modernization or replacement over the coming years?
Well, we do have a modernization program that looks at all of our aging facilities. With inflation the way it is, we are not getting to some of our older schools until they're over 100 years old. These four schools right now in the CIP program would, they would be 75 years old roughly by the time they are replaced, and that is much younger than some of our other aging buildings in our assets right now. So that that is something that we definitely take careful attention to. We try to maintain our buildings as well as possible, but again, really working on making sure that we have spaces for collaboration as well for students so that they can be competitive. And so, you know, these replacement buildings is an opportunity to create those spaces and opportunities as well as career and technical education, opportunities for our students as, you know, as the as the world continues to change in terms of the workforce they'll be part of.
No, and I appreciate it. I'm just going to say that I guess the challenges that we're going to have in the future, you know, hopefully with the broadband coming in and cables coming in, that we're going to create some new revenue streams that are going to help support, you know, our, all of our future needs. And then, you know, just to finally, you know, just, you know, not every, every child is destined for college, and we have definite, definite workforce needs in the trade areas. How aggressively can we go forward? Because, you know, we need welders, we need auto body repair people, we need electricians, you know, you know, just as much as we do some college graduates, so, you know, is there any real focus on that looking forward?
Absolutely, and so you can see from the educational specifications we've shared with this brief and any questions you have related it, related to it, but it's important to note, too, you know, none of this work, you know, whether we see the GMP ends up coming back as, you know, we can do it, or maybe we can't do it, maybe we have to wait, but none of this work that we've done has been lost, and we've had really great conversations with both the community, students, and administration, as well as with our higher educational and workforce stakeholders that have been attending meetings as well, to talk about what needs, student learning needs would be. And so, you know, presenting to you today is what what we came back with at the 30%. We have a way to go to 100%, you know, whether we continue through the PPA process with it or we go through a different process with it. It's an important step to start and and make sure we're thinking of the future of our students and giving all of them availability to skills they'll need for the future.
And, you know, once again, I think as a region, there's going to be a push to try to get apprenticeship programs going. That's going to require, you know, some levels at the state level, but the governor and the secretary of education may be on board, but once again, we just have to embrace the future and get the yes somehow. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members.
Okay. Okay, at this point, any discussion initiatives or comments from council members? Okay, Jennifer.
Active Transportation Advisory Committee and the biking at the oceanfront this past week, I heard, I wasn't able to make it, but I heard 3,000 people went and biked and were able to participate in that event, so just wanted to celebrate the city for continuing that tradition and looking forward to more opportunities to get out there on the bike on the boardwalk. Thank you.
Michael, did you want to share the event that Shavon?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. I wanted to, I'd be happy to share that BBVMX, which is I wanted to, I'd be happy to share that VBBMX, which is a local BMX organization that emerged after they were displaced from the site where they rode previously, and has been working with the city and Parks and Rec and many other departments to identify a site where they could build trails and continue to ride. And I'm so pleased to report because of your support, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Wilson and many city staff, city manager, and also city attorney Mark Styles, we're able to identify a site and reach an agreement with VBBMX. And so they're pretty much ready to go. I don't know if they've actually signed yet, but all of the, all of their requirements are, have been met, and they're entering into an agreement with the city where they can build trails and continue to do it. On Saturday, George Alcarez with VBBMX hosted a fundraiser and BMX exhibition that was very well attended, and it was a lot of fun. And it really just kicks off their effort to raise the funds needed to do the engineering and design work for the trail. Thanks to everyone who supported, and it's just a really great cause.
And it's a District 5.
Yeah, but who's counting, right? Yeah, Jennifer?
And I forgot, quite a few folks showed up, two former District 1, current Sheriff Rocky Holcomb's Turkey Bowl. And so my colleagues, Josh and Michael Berlucci and Chris Taylor and Amelia Ross Hammond were there. The mayor, I believe you brought him as well. And so they were, it was the Public Safety Sheriff's Office versus Public Educators, which initially I was like, I don't know how I feel about that, like in terms of balance, teachers versus sheriffs. I was like, but it ended up being okay. Minor injuries, I believe. And so, no, it was all right. Yeah, so women and men were playing, and it was a fundraiser for the Virginia Beach Public Schools, their beach bag. So the proceeds went to support that. And Councilmember Berlucci did the coin toss, and Councilman Taylor and my husband, Senator Rouse, were the referees for the event. And so it was really cool to see the public come out and support both of these groups that do so much for our city. So just wanted to shout that out.
Okay, Amelia?
Well, District 4 is still doing well. We've had, what, the Lego, and then we've had the ODU data signs. And yesterday was Chicho's Restaurant, which was really nice. And the, one of the regional owners and the other, who started it in 1967, he was in town and talked about how he's helped so many others. He did the Peabody, Gracie Charlie, and several others. That's 55 years of doing this, and he is local. They both started this in Virginia Beach. And so that's opened the doors for many more employees. So I was real excited about that, and ate too much.
Oh, that's great news. Anyone else?
Okay, I've got two things. One thing I want to bring up, and, you know, once again, you know, I believe our council really believes on being transparent and, you know, letting people know what goes on. And in regard to what we had in closed session last week, you know, we had some concerns raised about the Avengrid project. And we did not come to a vote or any really type of decision point, but there were a number of things that were addressed. And just to let you know, Patrick and I did meet with the principals from Avengrid and shared the concerns that were out there, a number of them, about, you know, about the contact with the, you know, the folks that live out there and, you know, other things with the business model and some of the other things. But just to let you know, they went back and they heard our concerns, and they are in the process. And Patrick, if you'd like to, you know, kind of emphasize, you know, what your thoughts were, we had the conversation.
The conversation went about as well as the council expected it would. They weren't happy about hearing about the concerns and the feedback that council had as related to the project. And I think they, they've stated that they're going to go back to the drawing board and see if there's anything that they can do to address some of the concerns that they heard. But I think from, from right now, I think we more or less basically indicated to them that we don't tend to see that there's a tremendous amount of support on that project moving forward.
Yeah. But, you know, but once again, you know, the intent was that we did have the conversation there, and there was an external conversation that was had after. So we thought it would be better to get it out in the open and public and, you know, to let, know what transpired. Rosemary?
I just wanted to say, I've had a lot of concern about this project. One is that Sandbridge is a very fragile community. Everybody's been down there, but it's really a sand bridge, water on both sides. And they've already got so much going on with cables coming in, Dominion Energy coming through. I just think that we just need to say enough is enough for right now. We don't need this other huge project coming in, this fragile community. Let all of this sort of work its way through and then kind of maybe reevaluate. But that's a lot to put onto a community like there. And this, there's a lot of rental houses there, but there's a lot of people that live there full-time, and it would be very disruptive to their lifestyle. And I think they've been very patient with a lot of things, I really do. But I think that we just, for me, it's really looking out for the citizens that live down there. And I think it's important to do that.
Barbara?
Of course, I've been working with the area for a good while now, I guess maybe three years or so, that we've been looking at this, this project. And it just seemed to have so many unanswered questions, not only about the environmental concerns, but the operation and potential operation, and not only dealing with where it would be landing, but whether there would be future impacts as far as the area that Sandbridge needs to get its sand from in the future. And I think that is being investigated by a higher level, and we won't know that issue for a while. But then also the great concern in bringing that ashore at Sandbridge, but then getting all the way over to Fentress and all during the line, whether, you know, with its potential impact in the area along the future parkway, plus the other roadways that it would have to interact with as well as the neighborhoods. And there are just so many unanswered questions, like I say, not only with the way it would be installed, but also in the future operation of this company. And I think it certainly has some advantages, but just too many unanswered questions at this point. And this just didn't seem like the theme for us to go forward with at this time. And I'm sure that the community is going to be very glad to hear this, and they can have a happier Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Josh?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for allowing us to talk about this for a few moments. And I think the right outcome was reached here, and I can say that as somebody who was honestly supportive of the project. And, but moreover, I'm supportive of the industry. And I think we can be supportive of the industry here in Virginia Beach without necessarily advancing this project because we've got, we are, we are in a very unique geographical position here on our coast. And there is, there's a tremendous opportunity in alternative energy that links us to our regional partners. And, and I think we still can and should explore those opportunities and be supportive of the Coast of Virginia Offshore Wind Project. And, and, but, but I think it's really, really important for the folks in Sandbridge and for the people who had concerns about this project to know that we heard them. And again, I thank you for allowing us to have this discussion on you.
Anyone else at this point?
There is one thing I forgot. If you looked on the front page of today's newspaper, the Hospice House is doing well.
That's a District 5, too.
As a member of the board, I'm pleased.
But once again, with the Avengrid, you know, I think it's just fair to everybody that we have the conversation at the table today, that was the essence of what we did. I think it's fair, you know, to all parties concerned. The one other thing is I do have a little bit of a request, if possible. About a week ago, I had a very positive meeting with the leadership of the NAACP, Mr. Majet and Mr. McCullough. And it was about an hour and a half meeting, and it was wholly positive, you know, with the intent of, you know, just really just building more community bridges and I think the opportunity, you know, to move forward. And one of the things they requested, you know, that was, you know, you know, consideration that they're going to be sponsoring a movie, you know, for a community movie, The Color Purple, on December 9th. And the suggestion it would be a possibility for a $500 donation for the city, and they would do some advertising and give us some tickets. And I just wanted to throw that out as a possibility. Is anybody, you know, objected to that?
Other people doing certain things, but for the NAACP or the Virginia Beach chapter, they haven't really had opportunities for, you know, really putting out programs and so forth to build the membership, the organization. So this is one opportunity. And I think it's a good opportunity.
They did outreach, and they would like, you know, better articulation and communication with the city, so, you know, if that's okay. Okay. All right, but I thank you very much. And by all means, it'll be December 9th at the movie theater at Pembroke. Okay? All righty. Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else at this point? I think Agenda Review.
We have one speaker on one seven, so that can be into the single speaker policy. And we have speakers on eight and then planning number one. So, so going through ordinances, does anybody have any issues with Barbara?
On, on item four, I had asked last week that we not go forward with this appropriation until we are able to have a presentation by Dominion Energy about the project. And I think they are supposed to be presented here on the 5th of December.
I think December 5th as well. I think it's likely the 5th.
I, we just talked about the impacts that Avengrid would have on the neighborhoods. And of course, that is one of the reasons that we decided that we shouldn't go forward. Of course, Dominion Energy is, as we speak, beginning their project. And they are going to be impacting a lot of neighborhoods. And of course, we are selling them the easements for the right-of-way to a tune of over $20 million. And that's great. I'm really sorry that we proposed, or that came to us, a proposal to allocate the money, which now makes it look like we're in competition with the neighborhoods that were proposed to get it, but they're not the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted. And it really concerns me that it looks like we're just taking the money and running and leaving these neighborhoods to fend for themselves the best way they can. I'm kind of surprised that we don't even have a staff liaison working with that project. This is a big project. And I'd like to read you, these are the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted to some level with this onshore work, some more than others. Prince George Estates, Mayberry, Ocean Gates Apartments, Harper Square Apartments, Derby Run Mobile Home Park, Holiday Travel Park, Crowatan Beach, SeaTac Civic League, Pine Ridge, Castleton, Lake Placid, Christopher Farms, Burn Farm North, Holland Pines, Woods of Pine and Grove, Princess Anne Meadows, Highland Meadows, Highland Acres, Indian River Woods, and Indian River Farms. That's a lot of neighborhoods, and they're going to be very heavily impacted. And I know it's a Dominion Energy project, and Dominion Energy is going to do things that they should, but I feel certain there are going to be issues along the way that these neighborhoods are going to need some mitigation for that that project's not going to allow. And I really would, would have liked to have had at least some of this money set aside to be able to address any issues that might come forward in these neighborhoods once the project gets underway. And like I said, I mean, it is underway. They began last week in coming ashore in some places, or beginning their onshore work. So this isn't a long time in the future. This is imminent. And I can tell you, when these trees start going down, you're going to get some phone calls. And I just really feel terrible to have to say to these people, I'm sorry, but we can't help you. I just feel like this is an important project for the city, and we should be there for these people if they have issues that we could help with. And I'm really uncomfortable with the way we're doing this.
Okay, Professor? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Ordnance one, if you could pull, we're on the agenda, right?
Yes.
I was distracted. Number one, for the Westminster Canyon Berry on Chesapeake Bay.
You want to pull?
Yes. For discussion, or I can have that now and save the discussion.
Do you want to have it?
So...
Before you do that, can you respond to Barbara's question?
Oh, I didn't, okay, yes, sure. Absolutely.
What does the council want to do about...
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I, I, first of all, I'd like to clarify with the manager, if you don't mind, to the extent there are impacts that occur to adjacent properties by virtue of construction and efforts by Dominion to install the power lines, Dominion would be responsible for that, is that correct? And this, this is above and beyond the purchase pressure, the easement has nothing to do with it. Is that correct? Is that...
If they cause any damage to the right-of-way or the property that they're working on, it's on Dominion to address it. And then just to clarify another thing, the money has a limited use, right? The money could only be used on transportation-related projects. And there are also a million dollars that's to be put aside for trees and things like that as well.
That's one point.
I think, well, over $1 million is for trees.
We made the policy that it has to be spent on transportation, because when we purchased these rights away, I think it just came from general fund money as, and the only way, reason we purchased the ones that we did was when there was a threat to development, and we knew that there was going to be a project developed. And so the city council would purchase right-of-way to protect the right-of-way for the project. We always thought that, well, when they build the Southeastern Expressway, we would get reimbursed for the purchase of the right-of-way. And so, but I mean, Dominion, these people are just going to have to do the best they can to get whatever they can from Dominion Energy. I just feel terrible that we're leaving them to the mercy of this project, and we're not going to be there to help them if there are things that maybe Dominion Energy's not necessarily responsible for. But this is going to be a big impact on these neighborhoods, and, and I just, I feel really bad. And I just want them to know I'm doing the best I can, but if I can't get them any money, they can come to the rest of you.
Okay, work. Wait a minute. Becky?
A question from Assembly.
Okay.
Because the properties were acquired with some state funding, it is required under state law, if any state funding is used to acquire properties, anything acquired under that CIP has to go back into a transportation project.
Can we go back and look at the beginning of all of these purchases and determine how we acquired all of these properties?
Yes, and we have, we have identified all of the CIPs.
All of them?
And I'm pretty sure, if not all, almost all, there were a couple that were dedicated by subdivision plat, but we are only putting in the funds for the transportation that are actually tied to the transportation acquisitions.
I would like to have some of that data, when we acquired each of these segments and how we acquired them. I'm sure it's all in the minutes.
Yeah, we have a table working, and we just had to confirm a couple of them. There were some very small areas that were dedicated with subdivision plats. The vast majority were in segments that were acquired for the Southeastern Parkway. And so, the very large, I don't think we've, we have identified it down to the penny, but that is what we are working towards as we finalize exactly which ones it's going into.
I'd like to see what was state money and what was local, because I was under, I was under the impression that we were purchasing these, and we were expecting that we would get some reimbursement when, when the project was built. We were just kind of doing it because we wanted to protect the right of way. But anyway, I'll be glad to go over the minutes with you. But again, you know, we've just said that we, we are not wanting to go forward with Avengrid because of the potential impacts on the area, but it's okay to go ahead with Dominion Energy and not have to think we have any responsibility. Because I think these folks are going to be really kind of left on their own to have to deal with Dominion Energy as they have problems. But we already saw in Mayberry the problems when we decided we wanted to use part of that right of way for the Amazon project, and how much we heard from the people in, in Mayberry and Prince George Estates about their concerns. We've had a taste of it. We're getting ready to really find out what it's going to be all about. And, you know, I'll certainly be voting against this application. Not that I don't think we should be doing the projects in Shore Drive, they're local projects, and they're, we're dependent on them, but I would certainly hope that we could, could provide some funding to be able to help if we, if there are issues, and we can't know right yet what those issues are going to be. But I can pretty much guarantee with a project of that immensity, and it's going to be immense, that there's going to be impacts to those neighborhoods.
Okay, Worth, and then Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. I have concern that if Dominion takes down trees and does the work, and then does not replant trees in that immediate area where it could be planted, and they plant the trees somewhere else in the city. That's just a question I have. I'm for this ordinance, other than knowing and answer that question, because this does impact my district as well as, I believe, two others in all the neighborhoods. So I'd like for them, if they do the work, to go back and plant trees where they took them down, where it's appropriate. I would like to know how they're going to address that.
I think we can convey that message.
And just to clarify, Dominion's given us over a million dollars for us to plant trees. I don't know if they can go like for like in everywhere that they're going into Easton, but I think the intent is to put the trees as much as possible in the area where they came from. But I don't care, and say we can go like for like, though.
I understand. Okay.
Okay, Josh, and then Amelia, then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. And thank you for raising the point about the tree canopy. I did happen to meet with the city arborist earlier this year, and I would be surprised if we got a million or $2 million for the purposes of tree plantings that we'd even be able to spend it, you know, in any kind of expedited fashion. So I, and I was able to glean that from her, because there, there is money owed to the city by virtue of people who have, and businesses who have taken down trees on, on city property. We've been chasing, chasing them for quite some time. And I want to say that, that, that number is, is a relatively larger one than you would anticipate. And, and I did ask if we, if we were able to collect all of that money at one time, if we'd be able to spend it. And, and as you might expect, it, it's, it's not necessarily the easiest thing to go ahead and just plant $2 million worth of trees, although I'd be all for it. And I, I won't read a list of neighborhoods and districts eight and nine that were impacted by our, you know, the recent difficult budget decisions that we had, we had to come to this past year. But, but I, but I will say, top line, that we had $60 million worth of cuts in roadway projects that were delayed, deferred, and those funds redirected to other places in the city, including the southern part of our city, to, to, you know, to, and, and I understood that at the time. I don't know that our residents did up in District Nine as well as I did, but, but, but those monies were redirected because the projects where the money went to were, they were closer in time to construction, they had already been through roadway acquisition, they were further along in the design process. So of that $60 million in redirected funds, a disproportionate amount to the tune of almost $23 million, so nearly half of it came from, from District Nine roadway projects. So, and, and as, as much as I do appreciate and understand the desire to, to address potential impacts to adjacent property owners by virtue of transmission lines, I can tell you that, that we had real impacts and have had real impacts in terms of our pedestrian safety, traffic mobility, and roadway flooding issues for the past 20-plus years along the Shore Drive corridor. So I would certainly appreciate anybody's support for these funds going where they belong. Thank you.
Amelia, then Barbara.
Well, looking at this from a practical standpoint, even though it's not directly hidden any of my district, this is important. One thing, Dominion has taken time and addressed most of, almost all of our concerns. They have been good partners. The reason I was involved in it was to do with the Virginia African-American Culture Center, because it goes through SeaTac and some of the other historic. I was able to be on those zones, and they have made a pledge. I've talked with Councilmember Henley, and I said, I understand the presentation will be important so that the neighbors will understand its implication if they haven't. Because they have had a lot of time with some people now realizing the cutting down of trees and so forth. Maybe city manager, if it's possible for Dominion Virginia person to put in writing, like an MOU or something, so that they have something that if anything, just like what you mentioned, comes up, and they will address it. We have some paperwork, some paper trail about that, not just word of mouth. Because with what Councilmember Henley is saying, we don't want them left out, but I also know what District Nine had an immense cut. And it means a lot to them as well. So that's why I'm supporting and also saying to you, maybe if it's something in writing, and we would like to still have that presentation just for the community, because I know Councilmember Henley's gone and gotten all the lists of all these, and maybe she'll call a meeting and call some of these people together. But in defense of Dominion, at least they could have something to say. We promised this, we're going to deliver. Dominion is not a little company. That's my two cents.
Well, Dominion's coming on the 5th, you know, so Dominion can answer those questions when they're there. But generally, if a utility provider is working in the right of way, they got a permit. If they create problems, they're responsible for addressing those problems.
I'm, I'm sure there are going to be things that they will, will certainly fix, but there are also going to be issues that these people have to deal with that we really can't right now name what they are, but they will happen. Dominion is going to make a presentation to, at my forum next week. And I am inviting everybody to come, of course, but particularly the people in these neighborhoods that, that are going to be impacted, because I think they need to know the timeline. It's one thing that Dominion has met with them during all this time to say it's coming, but it's another thing when it's actually in their backyard. It's going to make major changes in these neighborhoods. And whether there are mitigations that could be done over and above what is absolutely required, we're not going to be having the wherewithal to do that. I know that tree mitigation is one thing, and I would like to make sure that they at least are mitigated within the same watershed, that they're taken note of. But like I say, when these, when all of this equipment gets in these backyards, it's going to be an impact to these people. It's going to be a major impact. And I think the fact that we're sort of leaving them high and dry to deal with it the best way we can with a project that's so important to this city doesn't speak the way I would like to speak to them.
Is there anybody else that wants to relay it?
You know, at this point, if I could just say that, you know, I, over time, Dominion has proven to be a good friend and a neighbor. And I have 100% confidence that they're going to act in everyone's best interest in their interactions. And, you know, and given the fact that the Shore Drive corridor took significant cuts and everything, I'm going to recommend we go forward with it. Does anybody else besides?
I don't have Ms. Henley's, no.
Anybody else?
Not that I, I don't understand the problems there, but I, I just am sorry that we've got a conflict, and it looks like we didn't really need to do it this way. We could have done it another way and not presented this conflict between neighborhoods, because they both are very worthy issues for very worthy parts of the city. And I'm just sorry that it got to this point. We could have avoided that by talking about it before it came on our agenda.
All right, now, can we go back to number one?
Chris. Yes, we have a busy night, and I wanted to hopefully save us some time. In terms of number one, there's been some discussion. I know many of you have been contacted by representatives. And so I wanted to have a couple of minutes to share some facts that I don't think have been put out. And I think, as the council member that represents the district, I was told earlier this week by another council member that there was chatter that this was political for me. And so I want to go ahead and clear that up, because I am a politician. So at the end of the day, we have to deal with issues related to government and making decisions. To clear up the issue that I won't, I will not be supporting, the vacation of the easement. But to be clear, this has nothing to do with building up the tower. And in order to prove that, I asked the manager to give me some information, and I'm holding the agenda item from March 11, 2020. It was voted on September 22nd, but as early as March 11, 2020, staff had identified that there was an existing beach access, and that in order to move forward, there would have to be council action at a later date. And the reason that was the case is because when it was voted on, on September 22, 2020, four of the members are currently still with us. It was a five to two vote. So not unanimous. There were three recusals, and then one person was absent. And on page three, it mentions the concern about the public beach access. On page four, in bold, public beach access. On page five, recommendation, recommend, recommended conditions. Prior to, prior to the approval of the construction plans, the applicant shall obtain city council's approval for the encroachment of the proposed pedestrian bridges over Starfish Road and Ocean Shore Avenue. Number seven, prior to the approval of the construction plans, the applicant shall have obtained the approval of city council to relocate the existing public beach access. Continue on page seven, public outreach information. Because again, the misinformation that has been out there, that this is political theater, and as I said, we deal with it all the time, and I haven't seen anyone win an Oscar. Planning commission, the applicant met with the Bayfront Advisory Commission as well as members of the Shore Drive Coalition of Civic Leagues on November 21, 2019 to discuss the details of this request. According to city staff in attendance, comments were generally positive. No major concerns were raised. A second meeting with the Shore Drive Coalition of Civic Leagues was held February 24, 2020. Concerns raised at that meeting include building height and relocation of the beach access. Page eight, the applicant also met with residents of the Starfish Shores condominiums and Bayview Villa condominiums on November 19, 2019. Staff has received one letter in support and eight letters in opposition. Concerns raised, including building height, beach access easement, parking, and traffic. So that should give a little bit further background. Then on September 24th, after it was approved, staff sent a letter to Mr. R.J. Nutter about the vote. And number seven, again, prior to the approval of construction plans, the applicant shall have obtained the approval of city council to relocate the existing public beach access easement from its current location at the eastern terminus of Starfish Road to the proposed new location. And so many people have not been paying attention or following this. I know we showed up at the workshop table today, and this was on the table. I don't know where it's come from, so if you are the source of this, please identify yourself publicly. This is a survey that was done March 11, 2020. And question number five, we're big on surveys. What are your biggest concerns for this product, project? And loss of current public beach access received 268 respondents, which was the second most responded question at 18%. And then I also wanted to make sure that I was thorough. Since I was accused of being political, I went to the vacation of the public easement submittal form submitted by Mr. Mark Borst on just this year, October 4th. And he expresses to the planning and community development the narrative of the project. And number one is important. If the existing public beach access were to remain, it will run through the center of a private age-restrict senior housing building. Security and peace of mind are paramount importance to the residents of WCCB and other senior housing developments. And I did express this to Mr. Ben Uncle, the CEO, that as a res, as a representative of 44,000 individuals in District Eight, including the 650-plus individuals that live here, security and peace of mind is paramount to all of the residents. Number three, in his project narrative, stated that the newly dedicated public beach access way is superior in every way to the existing public beach access way. It would include new foot washing stations. To my surprise, yesterday, on a phone call with Mr. Uncle, I was informed that staff had recommended that they get rid of the foot washing stations. I want the public to understand that's no longer a amenity on this new access that may be voted on. And I thought it was also important that he mentioned that the biggest advantage of the new beach access way is that it is designed to be ADA compliant with a ramp down to the beach for those disabilities. It will be the only public ADA compliant beach, public beach access way along this entire stretch of beach. Number four, the new public beach access way is, as finely designed, is only steps away from the existing beach access way, and it's closer to areas with the greatest amount of public parking. And as I wrap up, the new public beach access way will be one of six public beach access ways between Starfish Road and Seagate Colony condominiums. And it will be the only one of six public beach accesses with landscaping, a foot wash, and ADA compliant. That is important, as Councilmember Henley just brought up about this Dominion and the transfer of resources Mr. Councilman Shawan brought up to Shore Drive. My hope is that if there are nine that is required, there are five additional public beach access ways on the Shore Drive corridor. None of them have ADA, and so what makes this one special? It's special because this applicant is paying for this new access. And my expectation would be, if there is a supermajority, that some of that Dominion money, we could go to improving the five additional public beach accesses that do not have ADA ramps as well. Councilman Shawman and I discussed his agreement with the applicant to receive $100,000. In the case, the ramp was damaged. And that is important, because if this is approved, which will not hamper, hinder the construction of the tower, we will be responsible for maintaining this new access. And I haven't seen any discussions or heard any about the CIP and money to maintain this new access. And so it would be our responsibility, if there's graffiti, if there's anything on this access, we would be asked to pay for that, and I'm going to be the first one they're going to call. So I just wanted to clear it up. This is not political. It's called representation. It's called listening to the public. And this is not new. It was never unanimous. And the reason it wasn't voted on in 2020 is the applicant understood, and I quote Mark Stiles in the Wavy TV article, is that they knew they needed a supermajority. And simple math, if there's three recusals, one absent, five support, two against, doesn't equal nine. equal nine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, just so you know, the city clerk informed me that the package with the information that you brought forward was delivered, and it was brought by Mr. Tim Solonick and given to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Okay.
So did we get the $100,000 from Westminster?
Which one?
Okay, there.
Is this fair enough?
That's fair enough. We'll pull it.
Anything else that ordinances to be pulled?
Number three, I understand from the applicant principal, who's my state senator, and I still am having some trouble understanding his business dealings with our city.
Is there any other one besides one?
And we know that number six, I mean, eighteen, not six.
Okay.
And then planning.
And planning is one.
Yeah.
There's only one.
Hey, I just think, Chris, you got the whole planning agenda tonight.
So I just want the council to know also that there were some citizens that emailed asking if the applicant had requested deferral. I informed them, yes, they had requested deferral, and so we have had people opt not to come and speak tonight. We do have speakers, though. I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina.
Number seven.
The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 37, 11A. Code of Virginia has amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of acquisition of real property for public purpose or disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A3. Okay, District Nine, District Eight, District Eight, District Two, District Two, Greenville County, Virginia, District One, and District Three. And public contract. Discussion or award of public contract involve the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms of scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A29. And that would be a spring/summer festival, another spring/summer festival, and a canopy project. Okay? And then personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37, 11A1. And that's appointments of boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Second.
Councilor Remigie?
Aye.
Councilor Henley?
Aye.
Councilor Rebbett?
Aye.
Councilor Ross Anlon?
Aye.
Councilor Marouse?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are recessed into.